Welcome, everyone, to the June 21, 2022 Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Plufka is absent. Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Waggy?
Lonely but here, over here, way over here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Great, thank you.
All but one.
Do we have any changes to the agenda? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? It will be so approved, thank you. Moves us down to item four, Citizen Comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes, and this includes people who are watching via Zoom. Have anybody, Kelly, online? Okay, thank you. Drop down the Mayor and Alderman Reports. First up is the Mayor. I just have two quick items. The first is, this week, we are participating in the Mayor for Meals Initiative. We've done that for the last two or three years. It's been very successful. We've had a lot of residents in Brentwood take time to drop off much-needed items. All items go to the St. Louis Food Bank. And this year, we're doing it a little differently. It's going to be all week long, starting yesterday, and it ends on Friday. So there is a list on the Internet of items that they're really requesting, but anything will be greatly appreciated. If you can just drop it off at the rec center, that would be wonderful. And the other thing is, on Saturday, is our Quarterly Electronics Recycling Event from 8:00 to noon. Again, it is a free event, available to everybody. You don't have to be a Brentwood resident. It's just getting part of our effort to promote sustainability in the St. Louis region. So with that, move on to Alderwoman Tice.
No report.
Alderwoman Sims?
I just have one announcement. Our Ways and Means Monthly Meeting in July is being moved to, if I'm not mistaken, it's July 12. Is that right?
It is.
July 12 at 5:30? Great, thank you.
Alderman Waggy?
Just wanted to reiterate the electronics recycling on Saturday. Thank you, that's it.
Alderman Gould?
Since we are in our summer sessions here, I'll go ahead and mention that our next ward meeting is scheduled for July 26 at 7:00 PM at the rec center.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmiller?
No report.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
No report.
And Alderman Shelton?
No report.
Thank you. Drop us down to item six, City Administrator Report. We have four items. The first is Brentwood Bound Update. Craig?
Good evening. Craig Schutter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound Update, which includes the June 1 warrant list along with tonight's warrant list, which is now June 21. Total spent to date on the construction costs, I'm sorry, total spend since the May board meeting was $1,839,382.41. Next is soft costs, $410,543.22 was spent on design fees, legal fees, utility fees, project management fees, and material testing. There was a property acquisition settlement done. That was in the amount of $1,503,903.98. In the categories of funding below, the only change since the last report was the Great Ridge-Greenway Partnership issued a reimbursement, so the funds received to date have been updated. And that's it.
Okay, we have any questions for Craig? Seeing none, thanks, Craig. Next on the agenda is the report, Quarterly Report by Kerback and Breckel. And that is going to be, is Gina handling that? Is Gina online? There you are. Gina, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. My name is Gina Cochran. I'm a partner with KEB here in St. Louis. And I'm here to present the January 1, 2022 through March 31, 2022, Agreed Upon Procedures Report on the Certificate of Participation for 2018 and 2019. So the 2018 series CIPs did not have any requests this period, so no procedures there. For the 2019 Certificate of Participation, we looked at request number 14 through 18. That included 61 invoices totaling $3.588 million. So under our three steps that we perform, step one, where we compare invoices to sign contracts approved by the Board of Aldermen, there were no exceptions noted. Under step three, where we examine the invoices for proper payments allowed by the official statements of the CIPs, there were no exceptions noted. Under step two, however, we did identify 10 invoices with exceptions. We had nine invoices totaling just over $100,000 that had exceptions related to the capital forms. And those were signed by the city administrator and department director, but not approved by the finance director. And then one invoice for $3,500 had an exception whereby that same capital form was signed by the department director, but not signed in approval by the city administrator or the finance director. All other controls related to the city, in terms of their policies and controls, were in place for all of the other invoices and those 10 invoices. It was just the capital forms that had the lack of approval signatures on them. That really covers the report. Are there any questions by the mayor or the board?
I don't think we have any, Gina.
Perfect.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to item C, 6C, the Fiscal 2020 Audit, Internal Control Report and Management Letter Presentation.
I have some PowerPoint slides I'm going to present on the screen. Just bear with me a minute.
PowerPoint has been uploaded to Board Docs.
While she's doing that, I'll go ahead and get some of the formalities out of the way. My name's Andrew Zabel. I've met with the Ways and Means Committee before. It's nice to see you guys in person. I'm a principal with Clifton-Larson Allen, or CLA. I work 100% of my time working with state and local governments. So I'm here to present the 2020 audit. It's about three months worth of work that I'll cram into about a five-minute presentation. I'll go over a quick executive summary, some required communications, our internal control observations, and then 2021 and future years, and how we can really help get the city back on track. I also include within the materials is a report to those charged with governance. It's really going to be a letter that summarizes the items that I've discussed. So the timeline for the 2020 audit, yes, we're talking about the 2020 audit. CLA was engaged in March of 2020 to do audit and accounting assistance work. The audit was completed May 27, 2022. We met all the deadlines that are required. The scope of services was a financial statement audit, as well as assistance with financial statement preparation and account reconciliations. In summary, the reason for the delay in the 2020 audit was largely due to turnover, both from a third-party consultant side and as well as management. But ultimately, we were able to yield an unmodified opinion. That's the cleanest possible financial statement opinion you can get. So these are required communications. This is effectively what's going to be in the letter. You know, I'm not going to read through all of these, but, you know, we really didn't encounter any difficulties with management during the course of the audit. There was no fraud or illegal acts that were identified, no ones of noncompliance as it relates to grants or federal programs. Throughout the course of the audit, we did identify misstatements. Misstatements can either be corrected or they can be uncorrected. So we are working up against a really tight timeline here. The uncorrected misstatements primarily relate to issues noted in the prior year. We did not want to go back and restate the 2019 financial statements. The first issue identified was sales tax receivables were misstated by $82,000. That, in turn, impacted the current year revenues, so those were misstated. There was about $711,000 of a misstatement to police and fire pension. That was close to requiring a misstatement, but still fell below our threshold to require any misstatement. As a result of that error, expenses in the 2020 audit were overstated. So there was corrected misstatements that we noted during the current year. And so these corrected misstatements are reclassification entries between transfers and your sales tax receivable accounts. There were some errors that were made on the side of recording those entries. There's a $1.34 million error as it relates to distribution of funds to the Brentwood Library, as that was closed in January of 2021, but the funds were transferred in 2020. And then finally, there was another error again in the police and fire pension report, which we ended up correcting. So the next item here is quality of the company's internal controls. As a result of these misstatements, there are internal control observations. I'll talk about that in the subsequent slide. You know, as far as independence is concerned, we do an audit, as well as assistance with preparing account reconciliations. Ultimately, those account reconciliations are reviewed and approved by Robin Jones. So she takes responsibility for any work that we do outside of the normal financial statement audit. Another item for the committee to be aware of is that there's some accounting standards that are going to change on the horizon that are going to create a lot of work for the finance team. Those relate to implementing new leasing standards, as well as software subscriptions or just subscription-based softwares, which you guys have with your MUNIS system. So the internal control observations, we had material weaknesses. Here are the observations that we provided to management. I just want the board and the committee members to be aware that the finance team that's in place now, none of these individuals were in place in 2020. That's a large reason why you had such a struggle in 2020, as well as some other matters. You know, I discussed all these with Robin and her team. You know, she's agreed with all of these matters. Ultimately, for 2021, we are going to help them, again, with the account reconciliations. The ultimate goal, which is covered in the subsequent slide, is to really get the city back on track, so they are able to do a lot of the functions that we would normally do by themselves. That will help reduce the city's cost, that will help them get back on track, that will allow them to perform timely reconciliations. Ultimately, our goal is to put the city in a better position. So timing for 2021, I discussed this with the Ways and Means Committee, but management is finalizing bank reconciliations. Our account reconciliation analysis will be wrapped up in the middle of July. Audit procedures will begin, this says July 1, but they're actually probably going to begin next week. And then financial statement preparation is going to begin in the middle of July. And all of our work goes through a quality inspection process through someone that does 100% governmental audit work. So that just ensures the quality of our work. So those are my, these are our materials. I open up to any questions or any thoughts that you guys might have.
Great, thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Do we have any questions? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Moves us down to item D, under the City Administrator Report, Request for Overnight Hours for Repaired Damage Fire Hydrants at Brentwood Square. Chief?
Good evening, thank you. I have a request from Boyer Fire Protection to replace two fire hydrants in Brentwood Square. We have, one of the hydrants is long overdue for repair. Both are on the south end of the property. Could be impactful for our services in the event that we need them. What is being proposed, they would start work at 6:00 PM while businesses are still open, but they have to shut the water off at some point. I believe it's around 8:00 o'clock in the evening. They have to shut the water off to that whole complex to make the repairs. What has been proposed is the loud excavation work, the loudest of the work, would start around 6:00 o'clock. After the excavation is complete, there still will be some noise, dump trucks with backfill of rock, machinery lifting, some of the heavy equipment, but the bulk of the noise is early in the evening.
How long do you think this will last?
They will be completed by 6:00 AM. They have a hard stop to have the water turned back on by 6:00 AM, if I said that correctly, yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Do we need a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment that Kathy and I have reached out to the Brentwood Forest Board, because this is going to impact, obviously, Brentwood Forest Pine. And they're on board with it. And we have a constant contact system that they can actually send a notice out to all the residents to let them know. With that being said, if it's possible, is there, do you think, a contact that we could get? Maybe if, you know, I just guess if somebody, they'd start doing excavating at 2:00 AM when they said they weren't, instead of, I'm sure people will call, non-emergency line, or maybe we can have a direct number to put in our notice to the residents.
We will work with the petitioner on providing that.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Do we need a motion to this effect? Can we get a motion from somebody for approval of the work pursuant to the June 13, 2022 proposal?
July 19.
July. No, it's, but it's dated June 13th, proposal is? Is that right? It's dated June 13? I'm just referencing the proposal. Okay, so, yeah, so it's, so we got a motion to approve the work that is submitted or that is proposed by the June 13, 2022 proposal. And we have a second to that effect somewhere? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay.
It's July 19, correct?
July 19 is the date of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes. Okay, do we need a roll call on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Brings us down to item seven, the Consent Agenda. I can't count how many there are. There's quite a few, so. Does anybody on the board have any questions or requests to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Sims?
I'm hoping that a brief question can resolve my issue. I noticed, or Alderman Gould helped me notice, that the liquor renewals, are Frank Papa's and Obie Clark's and Miley not intending to renew their liquor licenses? Or are restaurants on a different schedule?
So there's only, this is not.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Don't read anything into it, I think.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions about any of the items under the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of 7 to 0.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Brings us to Old Business, under which we have, I think, seven items. The first is Bill Number 6385. Can we get a second reading of Bill 6385 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6385, an ordinance amending Chapter 135 of the Brentwood City Code relating to purchasing.
Great, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6385 into ordinance form?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill 6385 will become ordinance number 2021.
Great, thank you. Brings us down to Bill Number 6388. Can we get a second read of Bill 6388 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6388, an ordinance granting site development plan approval to an office building at 241 Hanley Industrial Court.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill 6388 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill 6388 will become ordinance number 2022.
Great, thank you. Next up is Bill Number 6391. Can we get a second read of Bill 6391 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6391, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit and site development plan approval for the Animal Protective Association of Missouri, APA, at 1705 South Hanley Road.
Great, Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6391 into ordinance form?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill Number 6391 will become ordinance 2023.
Thank you. Brings us to Bill Number 6392. Can we get a second reading of Bill 6392 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill Number 6392, an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 200 Hanley Industrial Court from PD Plan Development Overlay District to UD Urban Development District, and granting site plan and conditional use permit approval for a 256-unit apartment complex and fitness facility.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6392 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Waggy?
Yeah, just a, just a point of clarification. So looking, looking at the plans here, they have 59 EV-ready spots, and that seemed a little high. So we went back and just kind of looked at the EV readiness. This would be the first application for a multifamily. And we ran that through our Sustainability Committee, and basically, the recommendation there is that, you know, it should be separated for the spots that are for the business versus what are for the multifamily. And there is a, there is a split there. So those numbers are higher than the EV readiness ordinance, which is great if they want to do that, but if they're just meeting the requirements of that ordinance, they are high.
Okay. Whitney, are you going to speak to that? Okay.
The applicants are here. In the memo, we did discuss that. They went back and looked at it, and they would prefer to do just the EV readiness that were associated with the apartment complex. So that would lower it to 39 spaces for EV-ready and then one charging station. And since that does meet code, that does not require change in the ordinance for you.
Okay.
They had just initially applied it to the whole development as a total. So they are, they would like to lower it to just be the, associated with the residential units.
Okay. And just wanted to clarify that. I don't think that changes our site plan, but that's just something I noticed on there. It seemed too high.
But the way that the ordinance is written, we don't need to make any changes to it? Is that correct? Is that what you're saying, Whitney?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the ordinance was 10% for multifamily development. And then 2% of that 10% was for the actual service equipment, so, yeah.
And 10% would be 39.
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you, Alderman Waggy. And anybody else? Any other discussion or questions? Okay. I lost track. Did we get any, we did get a motion to perfect, right? Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, then roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill 6392 will become ordinance 2024.
Thank you. Brings us to Bill Number 6393. Can we get a second read by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6393, an ordinance granting site development plan approval for modifications to the exterior of the building and site for the veterinarian emergency group, a 24-hour emergency veterinarian or animal hospital at 2101 South Brentwood Boulevard.
Great, can we get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6393 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill Number 6393 will become ordinance 2025.
Thank you. Brings us to Bill Number 6394. Can we get a second read of Bill Number 6394 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6394, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for 2,229-square-foot tavern and cocktail lounge, Scissors &amp; Scotch, a men's hair grooming salon and bar.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6394 into ordinance form?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of 7 to 0, Bill Number 6394 will become ordinance 2026.
Okay. And that brings us down to Bill Number 6398. Can we get a second reading of Bill 6398 by title only, please? First read, I'm sorry. Why is that under Old Business?
First and second, or just first?
Well, being, ah, got it. It was misplaced, that's why. Okay. So can we get a first read of Bill 6398 by title only, please?
First reading of Bill 6398, an ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, approving a certain First Amendment to real estate sale contract with ByState Development Agency of the Missouri-Illinois Metropolitan District for the purchase of a portion of real estate property at 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard and real property at 3,120 South Brentwood Boulevard, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Mark, are you, okay.
Good evening. Just very quickly on this, this is to just extend the diligence dates and the closing dates for this, two reasons. One is, we've determined it needs to go through a full subdivision plat approval through P&amp;Z and then to the board. And because of the timing of the scheduled meetings in the summer, it'll push our deadlines beyond that. And then it'll push out the closing date a little bit longer than we normally close after we conclude our due diligence. And that's because the Missouri Department Conservation needs to see our closing statement ahead of time with a lot of lead time.
Okay, thank you. We have any questions about this? Alderman Gould?
Forget, forget my name there?
Yeah.
In the finance portion, it mentions the Open Space Council approving $20,000 towards it, but in, isn't, in the consent agenda earlier, wasn't that $50,000?
Ah, Eric's going to enlighten us.
Yes, they actually initially approved $20,000, but they've increased their donation to $50,000. So what's in the, what's supposed in the consent agenda is correct.
Okay. And then, since you're standing up here, as we're looking for, still looking for other potential revenue opportunities or partnership opportunities, even if we go through and use city funding to finalize the purchase, that doesn't preclude us from entering into other partnerships to help with the funding of this, either the purchase of the land or, or development of the property as well?
Correct. No, it does not. They'll just basically be paying after the fact. I mean, even, even though the State Patrol Council wants to see the purchase before they provide the funding.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? We do want to have a second read on this tonight. So can we get a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.[1749.04]
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion for a second read? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6398 by title only, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Second reading of Bill 6398, an ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain First Amendment to real estate sale contract with ByState Development Agency of the Missouri Illinois Metropolitan District for the purchase of a portion of real property at 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard and real property at 3,120 South Brentwood Boulevard, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, and containing a severability clause.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill 6398 into ordinance form.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, rule call?
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6398 will become ordinance 2027.
Great, thank you. Okay, that brings us to new business. We have five items under that. The first is a request for tax abatement for 241 Hanley Industrial Court. And who is presenting on this, Bola? Okay.
Both presenting?
Sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this matter. My name is Ryan Farrar. I'm here with my business partner, Joseph Lucido. We've operated businesses in Brentwood over the past 12 years. Tonight, we're here representing LFS Holdings LLC. We are the property owners of 241 Hanley Industrial Court. This is an undeveloped piece of land near the interests of the industrial court from Hanley Road. Earlier this year, our request for a 25-year property tax abatement was denied. We're here tonight with a reduced ask and additional public benefits. We also want to give the full context of why we need assistance and what our project offers Brentwood. We began planning this project in the fall of 2020, and since then, building materials and labor costs have increased drastically. MSD is requiring us to add a bio-retention system. We are also required to raise the entire property six to 12 inches. This alone has increased costs over $177,000. The combination of these factors has resulted in the total project cost nearly doubling. At the onset of this project, we had no plans to ask for incentives. But now that circumstances have changed, we are seeking assistance with the project. Personally, we are doubling the amount of our initial investment, and we are also personally guaranteeing the financing on this project. We're doing everything we can to make this project feasible, and after discussing different financial options with our banking partner, we have an updated ask. We have reduced our ask from a 25-year tax abatement down to a 10-year. And we understand incentives are granted under a few circumstances. Not only does it need to benefit the public, but it also needs to be in line with the plans of Brentwood. Taking the land from undeveloped to a fully-developed project will be a substantial increase in the yearly tax benefit to Brentwood. We also know that public parking is an issue in Hanley Industrial Court. And as a benefit to the public, all of our exterior parking spaces will be available for public parking. Building tenants will use the covered parking structure on-site. We've also agreed to grant easement for the installation of future sidewalks connecting the Hanley Industrial Court area. We will also pay for the installation and operation of two Level 2 ChargePoint electric vehicle charging stations. And these are exactly like the charging stations at Brentwood Community Center. These will be made available to the public and anyone traveling through the area free of charge. The chargers will be listed on the ChargePoint network and draw in additional travelers to Brentwood. Our main business will occupy the space as well as house innovative startups and entrepreneurial businesses. We have previously office in T-Rex, Cortex, and have participated in the Square One program and placed at St. Louis's Startup Weekend. This project will mimic the same atmosphere and give support to those businesses. These tenants will also provide additional revenues to the City of Brentwood. We would now like to reference the Brentwood 2020 Comprehensive Plan. The reason we are quoting the plan numerous times is because the project is exactly what the city is calling for in Hanley Industrial Park. Hanley Industrial Court has been a topic of redevelopment since 1997, and property obsolescence has made this area of the community an important discussion. Page 53 of the Brentwood 2020 Comprehensive Plan states, "The character area would be best suited for cottage industries, innovative technologies, startups, and incubator offices." The pink box represents where our project would be. The plan goes on to say, "The appearance and condition of major commercial corridors is a shared concern of participants, as well as the number of businesses being forced to relocate due to increases in rents. In addition, there was concern the Hanley Industrial Court and its label as 'industrial', many would prefer it to be relabeled and redeveloped as a business park and transformed with mixed-use development." The plan also states, during outreach, many individuals stated they would prefer job-creating uses and professional office space more than the current mix of contractors, exercise gyms, which participants felt were underutilizing Brentwood's limited industrial park space. On page 36 of the plan, it says, "The city should identify industrial properties that may be potential brownfield sites to assess key redevelopment sites and seek funding for redevelopment. Our project is clearly one of those sites and is directly in the desired business park redevelopment area." The Comprehensive Plan also mentions goals for the current Hanley Industrial Court. Some of those are, "Rebrand the area as a sustainable, innovative, tech- and transit-oriented employment hub, while improving the area as a positive contributor to the city's image." The plan also mentions commercial area objectives when talking about the Hanley Industrial Court, stating that it should encourage and promote the redevelopment of vacant sites, work with the development community to encourage and promote mixed-use commercial, office, and residential developments for Town Center and Hanley Industrial Court. Next, the plan discusses looking years into the future in the year 2037. What was once Hanley Industrial Court is now known as Hanley Business Park. Investment continues to grow, facilities are continuing to upgrade, meet, and in some cases exceed performance standards for noise, air, odor, and appearance. Functionally obsolete facilities have been replaced with more contemporary structures that house thriving businesses and industries. As you can see, our building is one of those contemporary structures. It also says, "The business park land use designation includes professional offices, medical offices, research facilities, light industrial, and office flex businesses." The majority of these uses will be concentrated in Hanley Industrial Park, located around Hanley Industrial Court. Business park development should be of high quality and should reflect positively on the image of the city using high-quality architecture, signage, and landscaping. Our project is exactly what the City of Brentwood is calling for in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, not only from a business standpoint, but from an architectural standpoint. The closing pages of the Brentwood 2020 Comprehensive Plan discuss some of the community goals, which are creating more local jobs, adding more daytime population, diversifying the tax base and lessen the burden on homeowners, identify growth and development opportunities, and developing as a center for entrepreneurship and innovation in the St. Louis region. Our project satisfies all of these goals. The conversation goes on to say, "For city and the community to achieve its goals, Brentwood businesses, commercial property owners, and the development community must be engaged as partners in creating and achieving a new investment. The city should collaborate and partner with local businesses to develop and program new special events, promotional days, and community festivals that will occur within the district and reinforce its identity and brand. Economic development personnel should work closely with planning staff to identify sites for development, redevelopment, and promote and implement incentives where appropriate." In closing, the plan asks a few questions that we believe are important to answer. What role do key stakeholders and community groups have in bringing the brand to life? And how will the city make this positioning become a reality? As previously stated, we are doing everything possible to make this development come to life. And it's our belief that this project encompasses the many statements I just reviewed and will serve as a catalyst to redevelopment in the industrial court. And now I would open it up to any questions that you may have.
Before I open it up to the board, I just have a few questions for you. You had mentioned, or I think you cited, three reasons for the cost, the increase in the construction or the development. And I think you said, essentially, the cost of construction, the MSD's requirement of the bio-retention, and then the requirement to raise it six to 12 inches. And you cited a number, was 177 or something like that?
That specifically relates to the bio-retention system and raising the property.
Okay. That's, I just need a clarification on that.
Yeah, the previous cost more contributed to the overall project doubling.
Okay, so that was 170, 180,000 approximately? Okay.
Yeah, those were incidentals, not related to the actual construction of the project.
Got it. I got it. And you have a figure that you're estimating has increased, the, the cost of construction has increased because of inflation?
We, we started out at 1.5 on the bill, and we're approaching 4 million right now.
Okay. And the other question I had, you're talking about the parking, some of the benefits to the city. You differentiated between the exterior parking, I thought, and then the covered parking? Do you know the number of spaces for the exterior parking?
Exterior, we have 13 available.
Okay. And your plan would be that none of the tenants would use any of that surface parking? Just the covered is what the tenants or the employees would use?
Yeah, that's, that's an amenity of, of housing there is they get the covered drive-in parking.
Okay. Okay. I have no other questions. Anybody else? So what you're asking is a, a motion for this, for this board to authorize staff to go ahead and hire, I guess it's our on-call, PGAV, to, to run the financials, I guess, what the cost would be to the city. Does that sound like a fair representation?
Yes.
Some people might call it pro forma, whatever, take a look at all these, these numbers. And the cost of that is $6,000, which is borne by, by the applicant. So that would be the next step, if you, if you care to do that, to have as much information as you can to vote on this, this request. Alderman Gould?
And then from there, does it, then it goes to the 353 for discussion, or no?
353 does not play a role in this, since they're not, as I understand the statute, since they're not making a request for 353, it's a Chapter 100 request, which does not involve the 353. So it would come, so as I understand it, PGAV would put together this, these financials saying what the cost is to the city and any of the other taxing authorities, I guess, that would not have, that would lose out on this potential revenue for the 10 years, since it's now a 10-year instead of a 25-year. And then you all would decide the next step. But by, if you authorize this, you're not committing to anything other than the hiring of PGAV to do this due diligence. And again, it's not being borne by the city. Yes, Alderman Waggy?
So, question for the applicant. You know, we're talking about abatement here, but one of the other options is a reduction in the sales tax or elimination of sale tax on your construction equipment. Are you interested in that, or is it only an abatement that you're going for here?
Only the abatement. We evaluated both options, and with costs involved, this would be the beneficial route to take if we took one.
And is the only way that this is financially viable in your, your current models if it's 100% abatement for 10 years?
Um, no, not necessarily.
Okay, so will that pro forma help you understand better what, what that case is? And are you comfortable if, if, if the abatement is not approved, if you spent $6,000 on this, on this analysis?
Yes, we are comfortable with that.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
Your Honor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Alderman Lockmiller?
You mentioned, and I, I guess this is directed towards Bola, that it would not go to the 353. But where does the schools get to chime in on their opinion of the tax payment if it doesn't go through 353 where they have representatives?
Once we hear back from PGAV, we will ask the school district to be in attendance when the report is given. Or the option would be for them to go before the school board and make a similar presentation. There are a number of ways to handle that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, anybody care to make that motion to authorize staff to go forward with the, with retaining PGAV for the purpose of putting together the, the financials? Alderman Shelton?
I'll make motion, so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion to authorize staff to move forward, and second by Alderman Sims. Any discussion? Okay, rule call?
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Item 9B, request for tax abatement for 200 Hanley Industrial Court. Is the applicant in here for that? Same, basically the same situation, I believe. It's, Whitney, are you handling this, or?
No, I'm just...
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dan Manning. I'm the attorney for the applicant, 16150 Main Circle Drive. And I'm here to present our preliminary request to evaluate potential 353 tax abatement at 200 Hanley Industrial Court. Don Stafford, who's representative with the developer as well, who's, is the developer, will speak a little bit about the project here after I will. But I just want to introduce what the request is. Basically, what we're asking for is a 20-year tax abatement. For the first 15 years, 95% of the assessed value, the improvements in incremental land value. And for the last five years, it would be 90% of that. During the entire abatement period, the developer would make pilots to the affected taxing districts. They'd begin in the amount of the current taxes, and the preliminary numbers we've run, they would increase annually by about 2% each reassessment year. We'd also, this is separate from this, but just in the interest of full disclosure, we're also looking at potentially doing a community improvement district that affects just this property with a 1% sales tax and a special assessment that would be charged to the developer. And, oh, and this was in the materials we submitted to the city, so you may have seen it. But as far, in terms of the public benefit being delivered to the city, we currently have a structured parking structure, which makes up a significant amount of our development costs. And given the parking study that we've had done by our, by our analysts, we've determined that we can offer up to 40 spaces for public use to users in the Hanley Industrial Court area. So basically, the action we're requesting tonight, I heard someone earlier said this is similar to, or the same as the last request, similar but a little bit different, because we are actually requesting our tax abatement under Chapter 353, not 100. As I understand it, we're requesting a motion to move the project forward to the Brentwood Redevelopment Corporation and to authorize the city to engage PGAV to perform the financial analysis and determine what the financial impact of the taxing district is. And Don Stafford can speak a little bit more about the project as well, and I'm available to answer any additional questions any of you all might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Manning at this point? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Stafford. I'm with Cornerstone Development. We are the ones who have proposed the project. We bought the land a few months ago. In essence, it's approximately a $100 million project. Without question, like the gentleman said a few minutes ago, costs are, costs are extraordinary. We have a structured parking facility on the project that's approximately $20 million. There's no income from that necessarily. It's just something that allows the Planet Fitness members and the 256 families that will be living in the project an opportunity to park. Breaking down the $100 million, it's approximately $60 million in union jobs that will be brought to, to the area. $40 million in, in products will be, will be purchased. The Planet Fitness will bring, it's been estimated by the, by Planet Fitness Corporate, will have 10,000 to 14,000 members. And again, we'll have... It, it, it goes to say that 70% of those people will come several times a month. Some will come several times a year, but we'll have... But we'll have a lot of, it'll be... a year, but we'll have, but we'll have a lot, it'll be a lot of people, and they have a reason for coming, and they'll make a habit of coming, and while they're there in that area of Brentwood, they'll, they'll spend money. So the economic impact of these projects really is staggering. And the 256 families that we're, that we'll have, gosh, they'll range from one to four people per, per unit, and there'll be children in the schools, there'll, there'll be, there'll be families living, spending, and becoming part of the fabric of the community. And so we just ask for your consideration to, to, to work with us. Thank you.
So the, as, as Mr. Stafford pointed out, it's a little different than the previous applicant in that this would, the next step, if the board approves it, would go to 353 and PGAV would still go forward with putting together the financials for this, this application. So do we have any questions on this? Okay, Alderman Weggie, looks like you're about to say something here.
Yeah, I guess this is for Mr. Stafford. Have you guys talked to the schools at all, and have you guys been able to, based on that one to four people per unit, be able to estimate how many, how many kids possibly would be coming with this development?
We, we have not spoken to the schools. We've, we've, we've spoken to the administrators here, we have not spoken to the schools. We are relying on information that we got from Involve, which is Randy Lipton. He manages about 6,000 units in the area, and he, and his group came up with a, with a, with several numbers that we used and worked with Whitney on it. Jeff, do you remember what that? Eighty, eighty students.
Eighty students, K through 12?
Students.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on that, Alderman, we do plan on engaging with the school district, assuming that this, you all vote to move this project forward tonight, we wouldn't get, didn't want to get too far down the road with any of the taxing districts until we knew that PGAV was going to get involved to do the financial analysis.
And, and I'm going to ask the same question that Alderman Weggie asked of the prior applicant. With a $100 million investment, proposed investment, I'm sure that you're okay with spending the $6,000, with the understanding that there's no commitment on the part of this board?
Signed the proposal and forwarded it to OLA, so yes, we're all in.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, if there's not any other questions, entertain a motion similar to the prior applicant?
Still moved.
Second.
Is that good enough for the motion? Do we need a little clarity on that? Do we all know it's the motion to move forward? Yes.
I will clarify my motion accordingly, yes.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second to that effect of to move forward, with sending this to the 353 Corporation Board, as well as the, the hiring of PGAV to perform the financial analysis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
No.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Brings us to item 9C, Bill Number 6396. Can we get a first reading of Bill 6396 by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor. First reading of Bill 6396.
Great, thank you. Dan, are you presenting on this?
All right, this one's pretty straightforward. We brought to you an agreement, we've brought these in the past, you know, last year and even this year. So this is a maintenance agreement, a BMP, Best Management Practice, for 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard. So it's on the east side of Brentwood Boulevard, just to the north of the Metro Garage. So this particular area is part of our GRG Connector, and it's a maintenance agreement that we're required to enter into with MSD for taking care of this area for perpetuity.
Okay, any questions for Dan? Alderman Tice?
Do you have an estimate of the cost associated with keeping up the BMP?
I know that Jacobs is preparing that for us, I don't know if Craig can speak to it, not off the top of his head, so.
Like, what magnitude, like a few thousand dollars every other year, tens of thousands of dollars every other year?
This one won't be, yeah, this is just one BMP, so it's pretty insignificant compared to the others. Maybe 10.
I'm, ongoing upkeep? I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned, just ongoing upkeep of, of maintaining the BMP is what I'm...
Yeah, that's about roughly $10,000 a year.
A year?
Yeah, roughly a magnitude. And this is something you have to do to do a project. MSD doesn't give you any chance to, to fight this. So every single project we've done in Brentwood Bound, we have to do is MSD agreement, and Jacobs is working on a holistic O and M manual, owner and maintenance manual, to go through all the costs of Brentwood Bound. This is the last project that they'll complete that, and then, just like we've done in the past, we'll present that to the board of all the other costs. But this is a small subset, it's one detention basin for MSD, and so thankfully, the cost in this is not too much.
Well, I look forward to seeing the broad list of all the things that we are agreeing to keep, upkeep on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, good point.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Alderman Gould?
I mean, to, to that, are there, are we, do we have the equipment to maintain all of these things, or are there going to be capital requests for adding to the equipment needed to?
When we looked with Jacobs in the past, like last year, we had figured out that a lot of it would be contracted out, so we would do an RFP if it's cleaning the forebay of, say, like a pond, if it's cleaning out pipe systems, you know, we weren't going to try to invest in a several hundred thousand dollar Vector truck, we would just pay someone, you know, provide a scope of work, of course, bid it out, and then get a price.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else? Okay, we would like to have a second read on this tonight, I believe, so can we get a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion for second read? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6396 by title only, please?
Second reading of Bill 6396. Out in St. Louis Sewer District, bound improvement project.
Right, can we get a motion to perfect 63, Bill Number 6396 in ordinance form?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6396 will become ordinance 2028.
Great, brings us down to Bill Number 6397. Can we get a first read of 6397 by title only, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Authorizing the city administrator permanent easement and sidewalk easement agreement following property, 8829.
Dan?
Stay up here. This one's fairly straightforward, so 8829, if you recall, we brought that to everyone on the board. Originally, $157 was offered, the particular property owner reconsidered the $157 and would rather have their driveway widened. Originally, they wanted it widened on both sides by four feet. Four feet cannot be accommodated on the east side for drainage issues and some other factors, so we can only widen it on the west side four feet, and they're fine with that. So they won't get compensation, it'll just be an improvement to the property, which is very viable because we're pouring concrete sidewalks, they're just adding a sliver of concrete along their driveway, and then that takes care of the compensation, and we're done, we're settled. And this is just to document that as part of the LPA process.
And that, that goes all the way to the, the whole length of the driveway?
It does, yeah, it starts like near the apron and goes up that western side of the driveway, that four-foot strip, so that widens their driveway.
And that's okay to spend public funds on, on something like that, where? Okay. Okay, okay. We have any discussion on that? Okay, we would like to have a second read on this one as well, so if we get a motion to that effect?
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion on the motion for second read? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6397 by title only, please?
Second reading of Bill 6397, and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into temporary construction easement, permanent easement and sidewalk easement agreements between the city of Brentwood and the following property, 8829 Russell Avenue, Brentwood, Missouri, 63144.
Okay, and a motion to perfect Bill 6397 into ordinance form?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6397 will become ordinance Number 2029.
Okay, brings us to the last item under new business, Resolution 1372. OLA, are we going forward with this, or are we going to, you want to explain the conversation that you and I had, or?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
I did.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna prompt the discussion.
Okay, Alderman Tice, maybe you can help me out.
I was gonna prompt the discussion. I'll, I'll start this, that, we approved this at the Public Works Committee, and Alderman Weggie voted no, and I've been thinking about it since then, because we only had one bid on this project, so I would like to make a motion that we reject this bid and ask the city to go out for another round of bids on an extended schedule.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reject this bid and to go back out. Is there any, any timeframe that we have to go back out? Is it in the fall?
So, Dan, we talked about that.
Correct. What we plan on doing was, if that's the direction we're going in, we would rebid it in July, bring that back to Public Works Committee, so I believe we could meet on the August meeting, and then bring it back to the board in August, you know, for that third Monday. And then hopefully, we get, you know, two or three bids. I did look at past history, so June 21st, 2021, you know, basically a year ago to the day, we presented five base bids and 13 alternates.
Wow.
We had three bids that we received, and one of them was the same contractor that bid on this one, and we only received one. So just, you know, that's the way things occurred last year, maybe this year, if we rebid it, we'll get more than just the one, maybe we'll get three.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that, the motion by Alderman Tice to, to reject? Alderman Gould?
Any issues with prolonging this out as far as the condition of those surfaces or anything like that?
No, we can keep them patched. What we figure we do is in the scope, we'll put in that we want them to start, assuming that we get the bids back and everything, and, and we don't have any issues. We would start in September, you know, probably after Labor Day, that gives you enough time, September, October. The majority of this work is concrete work, so it's not as temperature-dependent as, say, asphalt, which is typically 50 degrees Fahrenheit. There is one little piece that's asphalt over at Evans, but the rest is concrete.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Tice. That brings us down to citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Again, now is the time to do so, you will be given up to three minutes. Nobody online? Okay. We do have a request to go into closed session pursuant to both 610.021 subsections 1 and 2, which is legal in real estate. Can we get a motion to that effect, please?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, on the motion to go into closed session, roll call, please.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you, everybody.